I'll call the meeting in McHenry County's zoning board appeals to order. The purpose for our hearing today is application Z25-0026. The applicant is Andrina Solar LLC. Request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. The PIN number for this application is 0326-400-004. The property consists of approximately 21.468 acres and is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Vanderkar Road and Greenwood Road in Hebron Township, Illinois. We'll start out by having the zoning board members introduce themselves in the township in which they reside, starting on my left.
Robert Cousin, Algonquin Township.
Mary Donner, Greenwood Township.
Charlie Eldridge, Richmond Township.
and Laney A. Custer in Alden Township.
Vicki Gartner, Nunda Township.
Kurt Schnabel, Riley Township.
Jessica Beverly Door Township.
This petition has been reviewed and the following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. The publisher's certificate of publication from the newspaper is dated March 7, 2025, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit of posting was signed and the date posted was March 10, 2025, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit of mailing was signed and date mailed was March 6, 2025, also meeting ordinance requirements. The survey has been checked against the petitions, the legal notice, and the publication in the newspaper, and all three match. The filing fees have been paid. The endangered species consultation has been received. The McHenry County Soil and Water Conservation District report has been received. For further information, please refer to NRI 240884644. Now, for those of you in the audience who maybe haven't been at a zoning hearing, how this works is the petitioner will present their evidence, then they will be asked questions by members of the board and staff, and then if any member of the public wants to ask a question, they'll be allowed three minutes to do so. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so it's being recorded, so you'll, everyone will not be able to, each person will speak individually. We can't have cross talk because it's the, you'll have to identify yourself when you start to speak. And so rules of evidence apply. After the testimony has all been given and the questions asked, then staff will give their report, and then after that time, then you can give comments if you'd like regarding this petition. So when you ask a question, it has to be specifically regarding testimony that's been given to us, and you'll be limited to three minutes. And then also on your public comments, you'll be limited to three minutes. I just use the timer on my phone. So anyone who thinks they want to ask a question, or anyone who will be giving testimony today, I'll need to swear you in. So anybody would like to speak, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you give today shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing else?
I do.
I do.
So at this time, we'll turn it over to the petitioner. Please identify yourself, whoever's going to start speaking, and you can present your case.
Thank you. John Carson, managing partner of Trajectory Energy Partners, and first of all, thank you for spending the afternoon with us on this beautiful spring day. Today, we're here to present Andrina Solar. This is the fourth project that we've brought before McHenry County. I'm happy to report that our other three projects are all well along their path towards a building permit and then construction.
Can you speak a little louder?
Oh, yes.
To the benefit of the audience.
Absolutely. So I'll be going through our presentation today, jumping to slide two. We are an Illinois-based company. We work on projects all over the state. I actually wanted to, we're passing out a handout, I wanted to follow up a little bit more on something we talked about in our last hearing, which is that in our experience, different communities and counties in Illinois are in very different phases of this solar journey. I think McHenry is a county, and there's a number like them, where you've had a lot of cases come before you, but not as many projects built. Other places, like the city of Rockford, had some early projects built that everyone was familiar with, but I wanted to take a minute to quick tell you about what I think is the community in Illinois that is furthest along on this journey, and that's Galesburg, Illinois. If you look at the front end of the sheet, about 10 years ago, in Galesburg, the district administrator, the schools there, decided to put solar on every spare acre land that the district had. So if you're in Galesburg and go to a football game, there's a megawatt project right by the parking lot. The kindergarten playground is about 20 feet from a solar project in the city of Galesburg. The middle school also has a solar project. And to be frank, at this point, those were all constructed and done over five years ago. Solar is completely normalized in the city of Galesburg. In fact, the city changed their ordinance, so it's completely a permitted use now. You don't even have to go through a special use permit. We actually had a project in the southeast corner, 50 megawatts, 350 acres, partly inside the city, partly inside Knox County, and again, because of the community's familiarity and awareness with solar, we actually got a unanimous vote of support from both the city and the county. So just wanted to share this example. I think almost every community in Illinois will be at this stage of, at least, you know, that level of community familiarity with solar in about five years. And so, again, we have a project, projects near here, both with the city of Rockford, another project we developed in Poplar Grove. And finally, on slides three, before I turn it on, I'll turn it over to Mac on our team. Andrina is a community solar project. We are really seeing at this point a higher demand for community solar subscriptions than supply. The first project that we brought through zoning in McHenry County, Plow Share Solar, which will be the first to go to construction, we'll be working, that one is committed that 100% of its subscriptions need to be in McHenry County, and Mac's done some initial work on that, but will continue to do outreach for that one as well. So I will turn it over to Mac for slide four.
Well, yeah, Matt Kupinski, Trajectory Energy, Northern Illinois Project Development Manager. I'll try and keep some of these brief here. I know you've heard some of the spiel from us and other developers many times. So a little bit more about location of the project. As you mentioned, it's at the corner.
Speak a little louder.
A little louder? Yeah, feel free to keep bothering me. That's my line. Yeah, corner of Vanderkar and Greenwood Road in Hebron Township. It's going to be a 15-acre project. As John was discussing subscriptions, we anticipate it's going to be about a $40,000 annual savings for the community. A little zoomed out image there, a little more context on where it is, just northwest of Greenwood Township and Wonder Lake. Switch to the next slide. So you've heard this one a lot, too. Why is the project located here? There's a lot of flat land in Illinois, there's a lot of electrical lines in Illinois, but really, there's not a lot that have capacity, and we'll dive into a little bit more on the next slide here, but the number of spots that can support solar is actually very, very limited. They can't just be plopped kind of in the middle of nowhere.
So we wanted to dig into this question a little bit more and put a much more detailed slide together for you on this question of how much solar could be possible in a given area. So in the lower left of this slide, the map that you see represents about 50,000 acres. It's probably all quite familiar to you. City of McHenry is in the southeast corner of that map. And we've laid out for you in yellow and pink the network of ComEd lines in the area. There's a large, what we call transmission-level substation southwest of, basically the south side of McHenry, where 138 kilovolt line comes in, and that is bringing in all the power for this quadrant of McHenry County. At that spot, the lines drop down to these yellow lines, which are ComEd subtransmission lines. Those run at 34 kilovolts, and what those do is take the energy to the smaller substations, which are all over the county. Our project, Andrina, is on a 12-kilovolt line that comes in from this substation at Wonder Lake, which is getting its energy off a 34-kilovolt line that comes from that McHenry substation. At this point, there is no remaining capacity on those lines for this quadrant of McHenry County. The limiting factor is actually coming from this transmission-level substation. The transformers there are queued up at this point. Now, the 34-kilovolt lines that leave from it, from a technical perspective, they each could probably hold a little more solar, but right now, what's limiting it is that transmission-level substation. What's really interesting is there's 60 megawatts of capacity in this quadrant, but it isn't all used up by solar. Some of you might be familiar with a battery project that was approved in the city of McHenry a while back. That is actually using up 20 of the 60 megawatts. Even though battery and solar can go together, the way the ComEd studies this is to say, what if every one of these projects was turned on at their maximum output, and what if our demand was at our lowest point at that time? And that is what they are studying for. And at that, with, under those rules, between what's already built and what's queued, including Andrina, and also the project we had here last time, Heartleaf, the lines are full. And so if you use a rough estimate, you know, sort of a conservative estimate of 10 acres per megawatt of solar with about space for 40 megawatts of solar, we're talking about 400 acres out of 50,000 in this quadrant. What's interesting is that when you think about McHenry County, this is probably as dense as solar is going to ever get, because as you get out west towards Marengo, you just don't have actually as robust of utility lines. Now, what could change and what could add more? The first would be is if ComEd was willing to add another transformer at this site. It doesn't look like there's any space for that. On occasion, they will actually tell us, if somebody pays for this upgrade, we're working on one in Livingston County, they could actually add some capacity. The other phrase that you're going to start hearing more often is called DERMs, Distributed Energy Resource Management System. And what that is, as I mentioned, right now, they're saying, what if all your solar projects and the battery are 100% turned on? We can't have that go over what our demand is. But there are tools that they're starting to use now, that basically, it's a remote off switch. So you could add a little extra solar, but they need the right to turn it off if they reach that peak condition. We actually have one project down in Marshall County that has a DERMs system on it that ComEd allowed an extra project. ComEd's in the middle of a pilot study right now, and really working on this to be able to bring DERMs to their entire network. It would add about 50% more capacity. So if they fully implement DERMs in this area, you're talking about maybe 600 acres of solar out of a quadrant of about 50,000 acres is about the max that we would see. Turn it back to Mac.
So here's our site design. A few things to call out here. It is a tracking system, so the rows run north-south, tracks with the sun throughout the day. You notice that most of the project, all the project on the east, south, most of the west, and about half the north is surrounded by vegetative screening. Mention a little bit more about that later. We aren't utilizing all the site here. We would have loved to spaced out the rows a little bit more, but we avoided the identified McHenry County wetlands in the southwest there. We know how seriously you guys take your water in McHenry County. There was also an area identified, the northeast of wetlands, that is outside of our site area as well. So we do comply with all the requirements of the ordinance in terms of setbacks, and specifically, on the west side, we are about 275 feet from the panel to the property line. You know, you received a letter from those neighbors, and we are quite a distance away from their property there. So we'll be agricultural-style fence is what we're proposing. We believe it meshes better with the landscape and kind of farming areas, and in addition, the way it's set up, it can allow small wildlife to go underneath the kind of last string on the bottom there, so, yeah, it works a little bit better in agricultural environments. As I mentioned, it's a single-axis tracking system, tracks east-west throughout the day. And then there will be pollinator-friendly habitat that's planted underneath panels as a standard in all of our projects, helps prevent erosion, is a friendly environment for the native pollinators. Then for screening, it'll be a mix of prairie tall grass and native shrubs. We've included a few examples on the slide there. Again, these are things that you have seen before. Turn it over to Abby Wood.
Yeah, Abby Wood, the Director of External Affairs for Trajectory, tackling a little bit about solar construction. I know you've heard this before, so we'll also keep this brief. Typically, we're talking about a period of nine to 12 months. Within that, you have different phases of construction, so there will be a portion where materials are delivered, that's not constant throughout that period of time, and then a testing period at the end, where the project looks like it's fully constructed, and we're working with ComEd to turn the project on. Within the construction, actual construction period, we've referred to this in our application, but predict, you know, nothing more than it's fully completed, delivering materials when that happens. There will also be personal construction vehicles on site. All of that parking is contained within the site itself, so there aren't trucks or personal vehicles parked on the road. And then, you know, we talked about the fence, seven-foot fence will be erected to keep everything contained. Flipping to the next slide, decommissioning, both the EMA, which you should have a signed copy of along with our application, as well as your ordinance, provide protections for end-of-life of the solar array. And within both of those are reassessment periods. The EMA requires a reassessment of decommissioning bond every 10, at the first 10-year mark, and then every five years after. Likewise, your ordinance requires a reassessment every 10 years. So the dollar amount that will be placed in a bond to assure there are adequate funds for decommissioning of the project at end-of-life will be reassessed over the lifetime of the project. And then recycling, we talked a little bit about this the last time we were here, and are really just pleased to say that the effort to make sure that panels are recycled continues, and there are now facilities within the state of Illinois that do that work, mostly in southern Illinois, as well as in the county. And so that is something that we are excited about at Trajectory, and we'll look to take that up.
Back to you.
Community outreach. As you all know, this is something that we take very seriously. We did our first mailing on January 13th, did a door knocking about a week after on January 23rd, actually went around to all the neighbors and knocked on their doors and left materials if we didn't get ahold of them. And then we held an open house on January 30th, which was actually very well attended. We had several carpenters as well who live very close to the project. A couple of them will probably be speaking today. In addition to that, had the opportunity to reach out and present to both Hebron Village and Hebron Township. Hebron Village wrote a letter of support, which you guys have in your possession. We also reached out to the fire department as well.
One quick correction, the Village of Greenwood wrote a letter of support.
Those, excuse me, thank you.
Talking about the solar benefits, John mentioned at the beginning, and Mac filled it up, about the ability for local residents to subscribe and save on the utility bills. This project also provides additional investment and revenue, so once again, we build all of our projects with union labor. We're proud to have that as a part of our commitment today. And this project will generate additional tax revenue for local tax entities in McHenry. The first year, we would expect 12,000, over the lifetime of the project, 250,000. And if you flip to either the next page in your presentation or following along, here is the breakdown based on current taxing rates. You'll see annually now, this parcel produces about $950 in property tax revenue. Even in the first year, that jumps to over 12,000, and then again, over the lifetime, I think that's it. We'll turn it over to you all for questions. Thank you so much.
Can you start with a question on my desk? Thanks. The President Greenwood wrote a letter of support. I assume that you're incorporating that into the record. Did any other of the elected officials submit a letter of support?
We do also have a letter from Pat Lawler, which is included in your package.
And the President Greenwood isn't dated. Do you know when approximately?
Yes, it was last night during their village meeting.
Okay, so very recent.
Yeah, so March 25th.
That's all I can, thank you.
I have no questions at this time.
So you were giving us some information about this term DERm?
Yeah.
And this is not something I have heard before. So basically, what you're saying, the ComEd has the right to shut down the solar if the DERm reaches a certain level, is it?
The way it works, so all of these projects that are in the current queue, up to the current capacity, do not have DERMs on them.
Right.
So under their interconnection, they have the right to put the energy on. They do have off switches, of course, if power lines go down. But in order to facilitate more on the lines, ComEd, right now, they do it as a pilot project. They say, okay, this is an area, we're going to test this out, and they'll grant you an interconnection agreement, but with the right to turn it off. It's really, there isn't a lot of data on this right now. Their best estimate is that it would be turned off 5% of the time. There's one project, we had one that has DERMs on it, isn't constructed yet. There's one in ComEd territory that has been constructed and is operating with DERMs, and they haven't actually turned it off once yet.
They haven't?
They haven't.
Okay. And how does this affect, let's say that they have a DERm on a certain system, and ComEd decides to turn off the solar. How does this affect them and the subscribers?
So they would see a little bit of reduced capacity.
So they'll take the hit on that.
Yeah. McHenry County wouldn't give us a lower property tax bill. We'd be paying the same on that, no matter what.
Thank you.
But we, yes, that would be interesting. But it would be a little less production. This is one of the things both the industry and ComEd are trying to get more data on. Now, in the future, what you would probably see more of is if it has DERMs, we have not, never done a battery project in McHenry County, but what you'll probably start to see is people proposing batteries with solar, if it's going to have DERMs, because then you could just be storing the energy when ComEd shuts it off and put it back on the grid.
And then, you know, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, because this is all of the information you gave. Thank you for bringing us new information after 50,000 solar years. What would cause ComEd to shut down the solar?
It would be that it's like a hot sunny day and tons of energy is flowing on, or maybe it would be like a cool sunny day. So there's, if it was a hot sunny day, there'd be so many air conditioners running, ComEd would use up all that energy, they wouldn't need to. But maybe like a cooler, very sunny day, tons of energy being produced, ComEd doesn't need it. And they, because what they're trying to avoid is backfeeding at this McHenry substation. What they do not want to do, what they ultimately are trying to do is use the energy in this zone without backfeeding it onto the PJM grid.
I understand that.
Yep.
Thank you, you explained it very well.
Yeah, should have, should have added that.
Okay. Just leaving it to some member of the world. So you put the pollinator-friendly plantings that you're planning on putting in between the rows, under the solar panels and so forth, will these be mowed, or is there another method to keep these under control?
In our application, we included a report, we like to work with NRS, Natural Resources Services, that are very experienced here. You do have to mow it more often in the first few years, and then, even once it's fully established, at the end of the growing season, you do need to remove it. You know, if you can imagine a prairie, if you just let that dry material stay, it'd be a fire hazard, so you do, but once it gets established, you really can get into a situation where you're just mowing it once a year at the end of the, end of the growth.
Okay, so you're planning on mowing it, not any other method?
Yeah, we are not planning any grazing at this site.
Okay, thank you, that's all I get.
Yeah, something that Vicki was asking, raised a question in my mind for clarification. If I understand it correctly, there will never be DERMs applied to anything that's already been approved, or, so DERMs would only apply once ComEd has started that program in this area, if they do.
That's, that's right.
So there'd be some that did not have DERMs applying and some that did.
The only exception to that I could think of is, it's possible that people have come to you for a permit before they had everything worked out with ComEd, so it's possible, but I'm not aware of ComEd doing any DERMs in McHenry County.
But if you have gotten proof without DERMs, gotten, well, then...
You're set.
They have no right to impose it on you at a later date.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, then my other questions are pretty simple. There are really only two residences that are anywhere close to this site. Can you tell me approximately how far one is diagonally across the road and the other is facing to the north?
The north, you can see, actually, we included in art showing the 150-foot setback.
Okay.
And so you can see, this one is probably about 250 feet, Mac? Did you say? I think we measured it.
Yeah, it's 250.
This is 150 for reference.
Yeah. And all of the residences are vastly further away. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, there is one to the west, but it's quite a distance.
Quite a distance, and then...
And then to the east, on the north side of Triandrove Road, is quite a distance.
And then down in this southeast corner is the Village of Greenwood.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. Thank you.
And then, Mary Donner has no questions, but Mr. Wood. Mr. Cousin.
Good afternoon. The Galesburg facility, is that within the ComEd service area?
It's not, it's Amarin, actually.
And I'd like to take any thunder away for Galesburg, because it has a soft spot in my heart. Blackburn College, they seeded Galesburg.
Oh.
They had an unused field, and anticipating that they would have an expanded, successful football team, and instead, they turned it into a solar facility.
And where is that, sir?
It's, it's, I'm just looking to make sure, it's in Collinsville, Illinois.
Okay.
I took the occasion, on my first appointment here, to see a solar in an educational facility. The photo that you have with the Galesburg one, do you not take it, that's under construction?
It's completed now. This was taken by drone last fall.
So the size, is the relative size of this aerial photo the size of what you proposed before?
Actually, it is, yeah. This is a 15-acre site, and this one, the panel area is about 15 as well.
And then also, I note that you're putting your transformers in the, I think that's what they're called, in the array of the panels, as opposed to any centralized endpoint, which is a similar illustration, am I correct?
Yeah, you can actually see it up in the, maybe the northeast corner.
Right, they're scattered out like hay bales, as some are known out here in McHenry.
Ah, those are the panels.
Oh, those are the panels stacked?
Yep, those are the crates of panels. When this photo was taken, they'd only put a couple rows of panels on, the racking was done.
And so the transformers, so will be within those ways?
For...
Well, either this one or for that one?
The transformers and the inverters in this one would be in the southeast corner, but set a little farther north, so it's well over 300 feet from the nearest residents.
On the cover page of your handout, and thank you, this is classic, there is a small object on the horizon. Would you be able to tell me if that object is a cellular tower?
I believe that's actually a three-phase line. You can see the hole, and then you can actually see the line. Am I right on that, Mac?
Yeah.
And then likewise, on page six, are those also the similar three-phase line? And then likewise, on page six, are those also the similar three-phase line?
Yes, that is, and that's a 12-kilovolt line.
And so that ties into the other illustration that you had on page seven?
Yep, exactly. That line, that 12 KB winds its way back to this Little Wonder Lake substation. Some of these substations are that small. And then you can see on here, the 34 KB line coming in, and then the 12 KB undercarriage going out. That's a very, very typical setup that ComEd has.
I have no further questions. Thank you for the time.
Does staff have any questions?
I have no questions.
Does anyone in the public have any questions of the testimony? Yes, sir, you have to come up and identify yourself, come up here by the table.
Steve Mickle, Tiber Township.
Wait, wait till I get my.
I just want to make sure that your driveway route is coming in as proposed here off of Greenwood Road and not on Vanderkar?
What we have proposed is yes, coming in from the east on Greenwood. We do identify an alternate, if for some reason that couldn't work with the county, on Vanderkar.
Does anyone else have a question? And is somebody's cellphone going off, can you please shut that on? Oh, okay. Yes, sir, you need to come up here.
So where's the entrance for the construction truck?
Sir, sir, you need to come up and state your name and your address, and then you can ask a question.
It's 7016 Greenwood Road, exactly house on the corner.
And your name, sir?
Anatoly Shkolnikov.
And your question?
My question is, where is the construction trucks coming, how they will be unloaded, where is the entrance on the field, how long it will be staying in the construction, and when it will start and when you finish it? Because I know that in the May or something in the summer, you're supposed to start, and the winter, it's kind of cold and freezing, you don't know the depth, so can you explain a little bit more information about this? Because I don't want to hear the noise of the truck, when is the car with the panel, they start, they're running, it's cold, hot. So I'm the truck driver, I know how it's work, I deliver this stuff, a lot of it on the country. So my point is, I want to see, if I will be here it, or I not will be here it, how is the appointment time and other stuff, explain about, more about construction, and about how is the will be scheduled, and where you park the personal cars for the electrical stuff, how, where is it will be trans?
You need to let him answer those.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's the point, when he will answer it, he will be step by step. And where is it will be the trans, how is it, transformation station? How far from my house? Where is it will be, because it's, some panelists collect electricity, where is the, this, where is the will be put out in the, in the chain?
Absolutely, I think I can answer all those questions. So the entrance road would be one of the first things that's constructed.
How many feet from the corner?
That is about 250 feet from the corner there, so not right on the corner. And I believe that's a four-way stop.
Yeah, no, it's, there's, it's not for?
Not four-way.
Yes, 250, you say it's two trucks approximately.
That's right.
That's coming, yes? So it's too, too small for the trucks. I mean, it's, the panel is coming on a 50?
I can make comments later, sir, but now you gotta let him answer the questions.
Okay. It's 53-foot trailer we need to accumulate.
Let him answer the questions.
And I will show you, I believe we got on our construction slide, the parking, well not, the, the personal cars that show up, and there's typically less than a dozen, oh shoot, I passed it, 14, there we go, there we go. Here's an example of, parking is all done on the site, you won't have personal cars up and down Greenwood there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, can you tell me?
Hey, you have, time is up, you have to let him answer the questions now.
Yeah, I need just from the corner, the feet, how it will be approximately stay, do you understand my point, no? So for example, from the house, from the corner, to see, okay, the north is will be on Greenwood, it's 250 feet, enters for the truck. So where is the will be parking lot for the personal cars, it's west or north?
They'll park all along this driveway here.
Okay.
Yep, that's what we, that's how that works. And the energy that's collected from these systems is brought to a row of inverters here, where it's turned from DC to AC, and then the small transformer pad is right there. That's probably about 500 feet from your home. And then these are the interconnection poles, the interconnection will happen down here. So, construction happens during normal construction hours, those are all details that are, follow McHenry County's ordinances, will be included in the building permit, but there wouldn't be materials being dropped off at night or outside normal construction hours.
Does anyone else have any questions? I do.
My name is Marcia Slupsovich, I live on Vanderkar, west of this area. I have a question, your perimeter, Greenwood and Vanderkar, will there be a berm around this area, are we going to see all these panels?
There will not be a berm. There will be an agricultural-style fence like this, and there will be screening, we follow McHenry County's proposed landscaping, that includes tall grass, prairie plants, and shrubs, like you see here.
You will be planting those?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
If you look at the site map, everywhere that has the green line along, so all along Vanderkar and Greenwood, the McHenry County ordinance is that anything that's 500 feet from a right-of-way has to have the screening, so as you're driving east on Vanderkar, you would see, see the screening there.
One other question, you're not going, if I understood your presentation, you're not going to use all of that field yet?
We're not, because of the wetland that's right here.
Yes, of course, I know, been there 30 years, yeah. You're gonna, your intentions is to produce all of that, but you're not using all of it right away?
Oh, no, no, this'll, this'll be the end of it, 2 megawatts, it does fit in this space, so this area will not be used for solar.
Now, the power you're creating is going to the McHenry area, where the, where the large transformer?
Will go onto the grid, so overall, this will produce enough electricity for about 400 homes, but that's sort of annualized production. On a sunny day, at a given instance, it's probably producing enough power for about 2,000 homes. And that's why there's a limit on how much renewable energy can be put onto the grid in any given area.
So we, as neighbors of this west of there, would not benefit from that?
Well, if you were a subscriber, you would see lower electricity costs, and that's something we'd be glad to talk to you about.
I see.
We will be paying significant property taxes, but it's up to your elected officials, if they use that to lower your taxes or just build a new gym at the school. And then, I think a more complicated piece is that, as we transition our energy infrastructure in, in Illinois, having these distributed projects like this is actually really good for the ComEd grid. It means that they don't have to build new transmission lines from, you know, higher intense sources, and it ultimately saves on our electricity bills, from that perspective.
All right, thank you. And just kind of to clarify, so the people that live around here would probably be the first ones that could subscribe if they would like, and they save about 10% on their electric bill, basically, right? Any other questions?
So comments are going to come out later, right? Comments are later?
Comments are later, yes, sure, this is a question. Okay, then we'll move to testimony from the staff. Ms. Charlow, if you would give us your report, please.
Okay, so the subject property is zoned A1 Agriculture District and is surrounded as well by A1 agricultural zoning. Our current land use on the property is agricultural, and as well around the surrounding area, with the exception of the single-family residents just to the north of the property there. And then our future land use designation is agricultural as well, and also the surrounding area. We do have that estate-zoned property just to the southeast there, across the intersection, and that is, that's for estate, future land use. I don't think I really had anything else. We, I went onto the site, I did see the zoning signs were posted, all of the state and county standards have been met, all the minimum setbacks and everything would be met on this site.
Does any member of the board have a question for staff?
I would just like staff to address state law that regulates what a certain work may do in regard to this.
Right, so the State of Illinois passed laws that, that include minimum siting standards as far as setbacks, height limitations, things like that, as long as those standards are met, the county does not have the ability to deny a solar, a commercial solar request.
And your testimony is that they have met those, right?
Yes, they have, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, if any member of the public has a comment that Dave would like to give on this petition, now is your opportunity to do so. So again, come up, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to give your opinion.
Sure. My name is Pat Lawler, I live in Dunham Township, which is very similar in characteristics to Alden and Hebron, which is where this project is. My house is equally surrounded by corn and bean rows. Every spring, we wonder, which is going to be corn or beans this year? And I would be really happy to have a solar farm on two sides of my house, not three and not four, but two sides would be fine. I've alerted the farmers that lease the land, or that own the land around me, that, hey, you know, you can get a lot of money from putting out your, your land for solar, but so far, there's no takers. I'm also a member of the Environmental Defenders of McHenry County, and I totally support solar installations on farmland. It would be, I think it'd be better to put them like over big box stores or over parking lots. I've seen that in Maryland and in other places, but kind of in this area, we seem to be putting them on farmland. But adding the pollinators is really, really important. Most of these leases are 30 or 40 years, and so by having pollinators under the solar panels, that's going to be really great soil in 30 or 40 years, possibly, certainly better than the land that's been farmed for 30 or 40 years. So we're sort of preserving good land, and so I think this is a good thing, so I would support it and hope that you vote yes.
Anyone else have a comment? Yes, sir.
Paul Brown, I live on the corner of Vanderkar, Miller, the closest house to the west. I just want to say that, I've dealt with trajectory before, I'm in construction, I want to comment that using, using labor, union labor, carpenters, ironworkers, not ironworkers so much, so, but operators and electrician, they use local contractors who actually use local labor. We've dealt with a lot of situations where other companies that are doing solar get their help in construction from other states, and they take their money and they leave. So these guys, I applaud them for that, for using local, and I mean local in a little bigger area, but not just Hebron. I do want to say a couple of things, I'm on the grid, I've been on the grid for probably seven years right now, clear, clearway solar, and I'm benefiting actually one of the best, because I got it early, 15%, I think, 15 or 20, and I benefit from that every single month. I am a beekeeper, and to see this pollination, I'm all over it. So, again, for them to put work on, for our local carpenters and construction workers, they're putting money back into the communities and actually building our McHenry County and Lake and McHenry, whatever, but it is a good thing, so I applaud them for that there, and it's a positive thing to have, and I have no problem with solar, I guess I'm reaping the benefits from it. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Do you have a closing statement?
No, we'd be happy to take any final questions, but look forward to bringing all these projects to construction.
Okay, so at this time, we will close the hearing portion of the meeting, and we will move on to the voting for the meeting.
Madam Chairman, I move acceptance of the petition.
We have the conditions.
Oh, we have the conditions?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. So the, the conditions are up here, I will go through them. Number one, the conditional use shall have no time limit unless the use is abandoned as specified in 16.56.030.PP.4, the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance. Number two, site development shall be in substantial performance with the site plan compared by trajectory energy partners dated March 21, 2025. Number three, the decommissioning plan shall be applicable in part as well as in whole. If any portion of the commercial solar energy facility ceases to perform its intended function for more than 12 consecutive months, that portion of the facility shall be decommissioned in compliance with all the terms of the decommissioning plan. Number four, a McHenry County stormwater management permit shall be secured prior to construction. Any damaged drainage tiles shall be repaired at the expense of the petitioner and in a manner satisfactory to the Water Resources Division Manager. Number five, a detailed landscape plan illustrating compliance with required landscape screening standards and Illinois Department of Natural Resources Pollinator Scorecard standards and land management practices shall be approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of construction slash building permit. Number six, fencing shall be provided in compliance with the National Electrical Code as applicable. The use of barbed wire is prohibited, setting fence posts and concrete is prohibited except for gate posts and where otherwise required for stability. Number seven, all requirements of the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance, 16.56.030.PP. As amended, subject to State of Illinois Public Act 1021123 and Public Act 1030580, shall be met or exceeded unless specifically amended by this conditional use permit. And finally, number eight, all of the federal, state, and local laws shall be met. Do we have a motion, or do we have any other proposed conditions?
I move acceptance of the conditions as proposed.
I'll second. The move by Mr. Eldridge, second by Ms. Donner, to accept these conditions, is there any discussion? And I'll call for the vote, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schenappel?
Yes.
Ms. Beverly?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, so this is approved 7 to 0, the conditions?
Madam Chairman, I move acceptance of the petition, acceptance of the conditions.
I'll second. It's been milked by Mr. Eldridge, second by Ms. Gartner, to approve this petition with the attached conditions. Discussion, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes, this is at the intersection of Triandale Road, Vanderkar, and Greenwood Roads, in a rural part of McHenry County, in Hebron Township, not far from the villages of Greenwood, not very far from the villages of Wonder Lake and Richmond. As I mentioned to the chairman at the beginning of the hearing, I can buy this site every time I come from my home in Richmond to Woodstock, so I'm particularly familiar with the land. As testified by our staff, Illinois State Public Law requires that we approve these petitions as long as they have met the state standards, and staff has testified that they have done so, so we have a requirement to vote in favor of this petition under any circumstances. Having said that, this seems to me like a perfectly good place to put something like this. It interferes with, with really nothing, it is not very close to any kind of It is not very close to any kind of dense residential. It is not the most rural part of the county, but pretty darn rural and largely agricultural and in an area that is unlikely to have further more dense development, certainly in my lifetime and probably for several decades to come. It is public policy of the state and of the county to promote these facilities because the energy is renewable, it is not polluting, and in fact, as Ms. Lawler indicated, it is very good for the soil as long as the pollinators are provided. I'm very happy that there don't seem to be any strong objectors present, and it's fairly unusual for us to have supporters of the petition testify before us, but that's always a pleasant diversion as well. So for all of the foregoing reasons and because I believe all of standards have been met, I support the petition.
Ms. Gartner?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Eldridge. Aside from all the benefits that he pointed out, solar facilities are generally very good neighbors. They're very quiet, and there's, you know, no noise, there's really nothing there. I mean, where there was corn, there's now solar panels. It's just a different way of looking at things. I want to thank the petitioners for their thorough presentation, answering all our dumb questions, and I want to say I am in favor of this. I would be voting yes.
Mr. Cosen?
Thank you. I must echo that the thoroughness and the completeness of the presentation allows for many of us to do a deep dive into the research and noting that with this technology, at least it's not being presented to us as other new technologies have, which would say that we are almost creating so much electricity, it's too cheap to meter. But rather that the people of Hebron will see benefits. And among those benefits, after 35 years, I certainly don't expect School District 19 to get a new gymnasium, but I do expect and hope that McHenry County Conservation District uses its resources towards the cultivation of a HACPA-TAC facility, which only in the last few years has been under development and identification in that area, but more so specifically to the area of the decommission. Knox County was at one time the national location for the construction of Purinton Pavers. It covered acres of territory. When that technology was replaced, abandoned, those ovens and pavers still sit out there blighting and without recovery or even use for that territory. And while they didn't have the technology at the time to recover it, maybe that area between Knoxville and Galesburg may see a benefit to it. With all that, then, I too will be supporting this application.
Mr. Schenappel?
I agree with the basic comments that have been made by members in our group this afternoon. I'll support the petition.
Ms. Beverly?
I will also agree. I agree with the comments that have been made, and it's nice that we always learn something new when trajectory comes through, and it's not often that we see letters of support for these types of projects from elected officials.
Ms. Donner?
I have nothing to add. I agree with everyone. We'll be supporting the petition.
And I also support the approval of this petition. I think the standards have been met as well. So I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cosen?
Yes.
Mr. Schenappel?
Yes.
Ms. Beverly?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, so this goes to the county void with a 7 to 0 vote approving the request. So at this time, the hearing is closed.